This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Counselor Riley, Counselor Derby, and myself, Counselor Terrell are all present. We have Officer Fish and Officer Alexander also present. Committee reorganization, I thought we did that last week?
We did.
Okay, so we're good with that, okay. Approval for minutes for past meetings, I would take a motion for the meeting minutes from November 12th, 2024, December 10th, 2024, and March 12th, 2025. So moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Extentions?
Aye.
Passes two zero. I will take a motion to approve the minutes from March 20th.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So passed. Public speak time, we'll take this opportunity for the public, we'll let you speak, even though I know you're here for the citywide speed limit, we'll still allow you to speak about that during public speak, and then it'll allow us time later on to deliberate. So anything you have to say, you can state during a public speak.
Okay, well, I think we need to...
State your name and address, please, first, sir.
We do that here.
Yeah, we do that here, too.
Because I've not been to a committee, you see. Marvin Ward, I live at 15 Cottage Street, right over there on the top floor, and I've been watching things going faster and faster because the weather is better and better. And it just needs to be cooled down. Does anybody know what a plate, speed plate would cost for across there?
Oh, like a speed hump?
No, not a hump, the one that's on the plate, the one that's made.
Oh, yeah, like a portable speed, like on Greenwood Court?
Like on Greenwood Court, exactly.
Greg Woodnow.
Sorry?
Our director of DPW.
Safety, right, yeah.
And so, and I did ask him to come, I don't know if he answered.
Yeah.
Good for him to...
Because I think that if you placed one of those, the right size, right smack in the middle, which means right about where our boardwalk to get to sidewalk is, and across the other side is where the thing with the equipment in it, that would work perfectly. Because it's practically middle, and the people start working up Adams, and then they have to rob them down here. And I just watch people coming zoom, and of course, if they don't go that over in the middle and slow down, they're going 45, 50 on it by the time they get down here.
I'm not sure, what was the process when that speed hump got put on Greenwood? How did that?
So it was a coordination with DPW, the residents, and public safety, this committee. And it was something that we had a vendor come in and show us the different portable ones, and then Greg was able to... So after it left here, I didn't, I wasn't very involved in it because Greg took it over. But right now, I am, he's not able to make it tonight. So I'm gonna just put some questions down here, any questions we have for him, and I'll just...
Yeah, we can follow up with...
Yeah, because I know it's gonna cost something. But how much, and that might make a difference, I don't know. But I really think that that, because it's permanent without being out of medical, you know, it's something you buy, and it holds up very well. I've been over it numerous times when I was riding with other people in the great Greenwood.
Yeah, we can follow up with Greg, and we'll be able to get those answers for you. That might be a cost-effective way.
Yeah, well, I think so, yes. I still think that we need to get it in place and do the features for the other people that want to have areas that are not 25, they can come up forward, because, you know, they will know it and we don't. And that was what I said at the meeting the last time.
Okay, well, we can follow up with Director Nudelman and see what the timeframe would be, see what the timeframe was for Greenwood, see what the cost was for Greenwood, and kind of maybe try to model it after that. But we'd have to touch base with him after this meeting, so.
And we have a standing agenda item of pedestrian and traffic safety for this committee?
Yeah.
So that would fall under that.
Of course. Well, that's why, but you see, the other thing is, you have to think about is that there, when this was a factory, nobody was living there. Now, there are 50 families living there. Some of them are here, where you're, hander, handy, you know, handy walkers, and others are wheelchair, and it's a whole variety. And then we have little kids, little kids, all the way up to high school, and different, all over the place. And so, that's important.
Absolutely.
Because you go to high school right up here.
Right. Okay, well, like Counselor Derby said, that's a standing item on our agenda, so we'll follow up with Professor, with Director Nudelman between now and our next meeting, and then we should have some answers for you before that time, hopefully.
Yeah, good. When do you meet again?
We haven't, we discussed that at the end of the meeting, but...
Okay, well, that's okay. I don't know what your rhythm is.
Typically, on the off weeks of city council.
Yeah.
So if city, like, city council met last week, we'll meet this week, city council's next week.
So it's really twice a month now?
Correct, unless there's pressing items that require us to be more...
I mean, I'm happy to come, I don't know. I don't know that I want, need to be on the thing officially, but I, you know, I'm very important about, I'm very...
Yeah, well, we can certainly let you know at the next city council meeting when our next public safety meeting is, because we set the date by then, so we can certainly do that. Thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate your input. Do you have anything else you'd like to?
No, I think not, I'll find out what you guys do. It's my first time here.
Okay, so I don't see anybody online for public speak, sir?
No, I think it's just us.
Okay.
I was the sole person that's on there.
Did you have anything to add as far as what Marvin had to say, or, I mean, I know you guys spoke a lot at the city council meeting.
Yeah, no, just aside from, so obviously, the enforcement end of it, officers are, were out there, our regular patrol officers have been out, especially now that the weather's getting better, are out during their course of their eight-hour shifts, are out picking spots where they're monitoring traffic, enforcing it. The other thing we have done, I don't know if there's a way to pull the data, but for traffic calming measures, we did add, there's a speed limit flashing sign, that radar sign that shows the speed of traffic heading into town, coming from Hoyoke Street up Cottage, it's right at the driveway to 15 Cottage.
Really?
Yeah.
You see, I don't come in that way.
Oh, okay, so probably been up for about two months, it was after the snow, kind of in between the snow, I guess.
Somebody told me about something like that.
Yeah, so...
But I didn't know, because I never walk up that way, or very rarely do. Sometimes I go for artwork.
Right.
And that's about the only thing I go up there.
Yeah, so during the next...
Which I did this last week, by the way, and it was fabulous, because cherry spearing was this beautiful, beautiful thing, and, you know...
Nice, but yeah, so you'll see it next time you go up. I can ask Director Nudelman, because they're the ones that had put that up, if there's any, I don't know if it does any data collection, like, we have portable signs in the police department, and those do data collection, so we can actually make graphs and charts to see what speeds collected and what they're doing, timeframes and everything. I don't know about that one. But I will say, just from what I've seen, I don't go out of town much, and I've got two kids myself, and we're always, always coming this street. And from what I've seen is, if you, if you go above 29, it doesn't even show the people their speed, it just says "slow down." That's for a variety of reasons, one being, we don't want them seeing, you know, kids drag racing to see how fast they are.
Hey, I wanna get to 40, yeah?
They're not gonna see it. Once you get to 30, it just says "slow down" and flashing. So that'd be good to be able to pull the data. But I will say, just from the time, just being with my kids at the ice cream shop, very rare, especially during heavy traffic times, but even, you know, six, seven o'clock at night, very rare do I see it say "slow down." Usually, I just notice there's a speed display, so that's a good thing, so...
Yeah, but of course, that's right at the beginning. Things get gained up when they come further down.
Right, right. So, but yeah, as far as the other traffic calming, like the speed, that's all on the Director, Director Nudelman.
Yeah.
Stay in the call.
And we'll try to make sure when we schedule next meeting that we talk to Director Nudelman first, so his availability, so he'll be able to be here, because...
Well, I know him a little bit, but, you know...
I am, I have...
So that way, yeah, he can answer those questions, and any other questions that might come up, that you might think of between now and then, maybe you might think of some other options also. So, okay, well, thank you.
I've been noticing the past few days, when I've been looking, that during the middle of the day, it's pretty good, but it's just when there's, you know, the rush hours are over, and then they zoom.
And I'll be sure to pass that on to my shift supervisors, so they keep an eye on that, and they dedicate more time to the downtown area. Now, like you say, pedestrians are out more, so we'll take note of it, and I'll be putting out an email tonight.
Well, thank you.
We've got new hires, so that's good, too.
Yeah, there's new hires coming, May, I forget the exact date, the second Friday in May, yeah, he's a trained officer, and we've heard a lot of good things, it was a good vetting process, and we think we're gonna be happy with him, yeah.
Okay, that's it for public speak, we'll close public speak. Public safety quarterly report?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have one.
Okay, thanks.
We can try to get back on that.
Yeah, fair enough. New business? I don't believe we have any new business this evening. We've hit everything we need to hit on the agenda, haven't we?
So, I mean, I think the 25 mile an hour speed limit is probably, I've done a little research, so I have a bit of an update. So, as you know, right now, the default speed limit in the state is 30, so if it's not posted, then it's 30, which most people don't. And so, you know, kind of the rationale for the 25 mile an hour speed limit is to raise awareness that in unposted areas, the speed limit's 25. I researched the sign piece, so I don't, I don't know if Greg has any grants that he can use to get signs, but this, opting into this does not get us signs, so...
That would be our cost.
It would be cost to the city. So, and so that's one of my questions I have for Greg, is how much would that sign cost? And I wanted to just spitball with you gentlemen to talk about the areas where I think that they would be appropriate as far as gateway. So I came up with five, which would be at the bottom of Mountain Road, that'd be one, or at the top.
At the top.
But the problem is, is there, the speed limit is posted, so, but I guess it's posted on Hoyoke Street as well, so maybe top or bottom, either way, it needs to be that gateway. The Route 10 gateways.
Is that way in the other direction, because Hoyoke is there.
Right. So the Route 10 gateways, so coming in from Southampton, coming in from Northampton, so that puts us to three. East Street, beginning of East Street, by, you know, right, that area coming into East Street, I thought would be four, and then five would be coming down from Florence Road into the city that way.
From Florence.
So I counted five. Now, there are other entrances, like we could do, like Glendale, you know, but that, you know, in Loudville, it's not as much as the other.
No, because they have a stop.
And it's more, it's more, you know, I mean, granted, that is posted, and it is, you know, people can come from West Hampton, come in and kind of quick to the city, so that could be a potential, but, so it could be five or six signs, but that probably is not the hugest expense, you know, so. I just wanted to throw that out and see if you gentlemen had any thoughts on those particular spots?
Or places you would think might necessitate?
So as far as the spots, I'd have to read the CMR or the state law, because I feel like there may be a caveat that it has to be covered at every entrance, because if somebody's pulled over, and they came in, even say Mineral Street, and they say, "It wasn't pulled, I didn't know it's a 25 in the whole town," we might run into a legal issue there.
No, no, it's, so here's, I'm pretty sure, because I've read the CMR the other day, I have it here, but one of the things you can do, which I did not realize, you literally can choose street by street to adopt this. You can adopt it by street, so you don't have to do the citywide. So any, if you adopt it for certain streets, it drops the minimum speed limit to 25 instead of 30, even if it's unposted. So I think, I think we're good with that, I believe. Because it's, like, for example, Acton did a citywide, Amesbury did citywide, but then there's Bella Rica did Alpine Street from Brick Hill Road to Boston Road. That's the only street they changed. So they only adopted this for one street.
So they, all they did is change the speed limit for one road?
Basically. And instead of having to go through the, you know, normal process of changing the speed limit, they just opted into this for that one road. So that's kind of interesting. And then there's some other ones, like, you know, I think, so, oh, no, actually, Bella Rica is on here a couple times, they, one, two, three, four, five times, and so they have all these different streets, they must have opted in at different times, that's why they're, but it's hundreds of cities.
Must be easier changing this speed limit.
Must be, have opted into this, which is interesting. So, but that was one thing that I was, unless Greg has some, you know, some grants, or maybe there's programs through the state that I don't know about, but in the CMR, it says, "City's responsible for the signs," you know, so.
There is this 20 mile, 25 mile sign up here at the end.
Right. Well, so if it's posted, it's, you know, if it's posted, it's posted.
Right.
You know, this, this basically just impacts the areas that are not posted.
To put one like that here, on this end of Union Street.
Yeah, so, and we, I mean, we can also, like, if we wanted to change this speed, we could always go lower than 25, like, if we thought Union was a 20 mile, or Cottage is a 20 mile, I believe Cottage is 25, right?
If I go downtown, it's 25.
All downtown's 25.
It's 25.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could always change that to 20 if we wanted to, but like, you know, I think, I think this is, I mean, the only reason why I think this is not a terrible idea, unless it's cost prohibitive, is it just raises awareness that there is a citywide speed limit. Because right now, if you ask 10 people on the street, "What is the minimum speed limit?" or "Default speed limit in unposted areas," I guarantee eight of them wouldn't know, probably. And, you know, this is just an awareness tool that shows the city council is, you know, responding to people's concerns about traffic, safety, and speeding, because there's not a lot of other stuff we can do, like...
Right.
Right, like, we don't have, we don't have a ton of tools in our arsenal without the person, you know, adding more money to DPW budget to get speed mitigating tools and adding more officers to the police department for traffic enforcement. Because there was, there was a grant, right, for traffic enforcement, but that's gone now, I imagine.
For right now, but I'm gonna reapply for it, and it runs federal fiscal year, it'll reset in October, but then there's guidelines when you can actually use it, and certain, you know, some have to use just geared towards, like, the drives over, get pulled over campaign, so, and it's certain months, but it runs fiscal year, federal fiscal year, so October.
So, yeah, and so, I mean, that's the reason why I think that this makes sense, because, you know, if we can help raise awareness for, like, our West Street residents that were concerned, you know, again, it just shows that we're on top of it. So, any other thoughts?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Counselor Derby. You know, I think the most important thing that we need to start doing as a city is having some sort of outreach education campaign, and any opportunity that we can capitalize on to talk about speeding in our community is really important, because it is, it's everywhere.
It's everywhere in the country, if you want to know, true.
True. But, you know, there isn't a single neighborhood that we haven't heard of in this committee over, for me anyways, over the last three and a half years, that seems immune from speeding. Some are obviously far worse than others, and I think we all know where the sort of key problem areas are, but, yeah, I mean, I just think in general, there needs to be some sort of a campaign that says, "In East Hampton, we value safe driving," and I think this is a good way to start that conversation.
I had a question for you gentlemen. At the last meeting where this was discussed and got sent back to this committee, one of the concerns that people in the public brought up to say that we shouldn't adopt this 25 mile an hour speed limit, was that there are people that are road raging to the point of following people, laying on their horn, you know, like, very, very aggressive behavior. And I would generally, if I was at that meeting, one of the things I probably would have commented about that is that if you call our police department, that we would be responsive to responding to a situation like that, if someone's driving really aggressively at you in the moment that you could call 911 and say you're concerned for your safety, and someone would probably come and help.
Absolutely, and that's something we deal with almost on a daily basis.
Really?
Yeah, almost daily, and honestly, if, yeah, I don't think, as far as to change the speed limit, so say it went from 30 to 25, I don't think it'll change our call volume.
Right.
Because we're seeing it where people are going 40, you know, 5, 10 miles over the speed limit, getting tailgated, cars swerving, coming out to pass, but it's almost a daily basis. And just one other thing, kind of to go off of that, so, anytime anybody sees any traffic violation, we always call the police, even if we can't get there in time, get to their house, they get out of town, if you provide as much information as possible, a license plate and what they're doing, we're gonna send the area cars, a car could be sitting right up at Needy's right now, and if they're doing this here, I mean, they're gonna be right there.
Yeah.
So I'd highly recommend they call. On top of that, as far as the outreach, I think Counselor Riley was talking about, if you do put it out there, so we have, either through Facebook, or we have a link on our department webpage, where you can make traffic complaints, even if you want to do it anonymously, that they go to me and one of the other officers, it's actually Sergeant Milky, he used to be on the day shift, who would handle the traffic-related calls right away, but those go directly to me, so if you were to make a complaint on our website right now, either anonymous, leave your name, as much info, it could be anything from cars are speeding between 8:00 and 10:00 p.m. on Cottage, to this one car goes by my house every day, can you do something about it? We'll handle it.
Right. And I heard that the West Street motorcycle got caught, apparently.
He didn't get caught, yes.
Oh, really?
Come in Loudville Road every morning.
Okay, okay, nice.
Talk about West Hampton, a couple people coming out of West Hampton.
Yeah.
I don't know how many times I call into the station in the morning on my way in.
Really? Wow, that's wild.
It is weird, because that was the one, one of the primary arguments at that meeting, we had two or three citizens get up and say, "I've had people behind me tailgate me with their horn constant for four miles until I got home."
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and I would say, if someone's driving like that, that aggressively, it doesn't matter if you're going 30, doesn't matter if you're going 25, it doesn't matter if you're going 40.
That's an angry person, anyway.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be coming at you, and, you know, they're not gonna be content going five or 10 miles over the speed limit, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're, you know...
And if you're coming into town, it's gonna get congested, where you're probably gonna get caught.
Yeah, exactly.
If somebody calls.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I think that was what I wanted to be able to have, you know, that's really good information that I think would be helpful for us to be able to tell people, you know, as we deliberate this, is that, you know, we have a responsive police department that will respond if there's situations like that, and...
That's the need for traffic.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I know West Street pretty well, and I don't see people going fast there. Maybe I'm just not there at the right time.
So, an additional question that I have is, and I can't recall if we've discussed this, you know, several meetings ago, I know this, this topic's kind of gone since probably before the new year. Do we have like a grace period for enactment? So, you know, assuming that we move this on to the city council at tonight's meeting, we go to the next meeting, is there a date in which we say this is when this goes into effect?
I think we could, we could create that date, and it would probably, you know, coordinate with the police department and Greg to see when we could get signs up, because it's, you know, obviously, we wouldn't want to do enforcement on a new speed limit until signs are posted.
What's the center posted, you think?
I mean, I mean, yeah, probably, you know, that's, that's something that we can kind of look at, but, you know, I don't think it would have to be huge, because, I mean, it is, it's, we're talking about a pretty small change, we're talking about, like, thickly settled neighborhoods that aren't posted, going from 30 to 25, so if you guys are doing speed enforcement there, you know, like, you're probably gonna get pulled over going 30, you know, anything over 30, a little over 30, probably, right?
There's a lot of factors, time of day, pedestrian traffic.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty close, like, you know, if someone's gonna, if someone's gonna get pulled over, they're probably gonna get pulled over. They're probably gonna be going 40, you know, and they're getting pulled over either way, so, like, I don't think we need to stress too much about, you know, giving people six months to process the fact that it's 25 instead of 30, we could probably just be like, yo.
Right now, they're going 25, not fast.
Oh, too bad. Interestingly enough, I literally just got an email right this second from a resident on 10 Strong Street, so asking concerns about speed that people are traveling between Plain and Park Street. They only have two speed limit signs, and no blinking speed limit signs. So, like, this is, it's nonstop, you know, I mean, this is, this is a pervasive issue in East Hampton, which is why I think if we can do anything, we probably should, I think, just to raise awareness, like, I mean, that's telling. So, what other, do you guys remember what other, like, things we were thinking about? Because I know that we had talked about the aggressive driving piece, we talked about the cost of the signs. Did we have any other questions at the last meeting that were kind of holding us from bringing this forward? I can't remember.
No, it was cost was one of the major ones.
Yeah. So that, I mean, and that could potentially, because the mayor would have to allocate those funds, like, so we would, unless, unless Greg has a way to figure out how to get those through a grant, or if he has them, or whatever, so.
I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money.
I can't imagine those signs would be more than $100.
Right, right.
Do you guys know how much those are?
Don't, I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
For the amount we would need, that wouldn't be a large expense.
Five or six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, probably $500, but I could be totally wrong, it could be like $1,000 a sign, I have no idea. I can't imagine it, but I never know, like, you know, $5,000 toilet seats, you know, you never know.
Who makes the stone these days?
The what?
Who makes the stone, these tomes, these?
The signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure who makes, I think...
I don't know who it is.
I feel like they may have been, used to be made in jails.
You know, license plates, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we want to send this back to?
I think, I think we're probably are in a place where we can, because we should be able to get answers from, I'll ask Greg, and we should have, like, some sort of, so at least we'll have information then. I would move that we bring this back to the full council.
All right, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's three zero. So this will go back to the council next meeting? Which is a week from tomorrow.
Yeah, then we would have to set a public hearing, so, we'll have to set a public hearing for the following one.
So, we're moving forward.
Moving forward, yeah.
I mean, we started talking about this in August.
Yeah. The wheels of government don't exactly, you know, run super quickly sometimes.
No, unless you're like, Trump.
Well, yeah, then it goes very quick.
He goes whenever he wants to.
So, let's see, let's look at a meeting date.
Yeah, does Tuesday work for?
Tuesdays are generally pretty good for me.
Yeah, it's really as well.
And I don't know, what do we have on, can you just read off what we have on our agenda, because I'm...
Roadway infrastructure, pedestrian safety.
Okay, so that's ongoing.
If you have traffic rules, orders to amend or remove, language is absent, outdated, inconsistent.
Okay.
Still, citizens request to consider citywide speed limit, so that's going out. Traffic and pedestrian safety on West Street.
Yep, West Street. So, oh, and we should have, is that an old, I wonder, we don't have Taft on there. Taft, Taft and Bryan and Garfield, and that should be on our agenda. So maybe we should just let Marion know that that needs to, because that is one of our agenda items. Because that was one of the things I wanted to talk to Greg about, was as the traffic starts coming in from Park, like, looking at... you know, because the Taft people were pretty adamant that, again, another part of town.
Right, where there's.
Traffic issues.
Very localized, yeah, so.
So I wonder if then at the next meeting, if we can set time aside, Counselor Derby, for you and I to get Counselor Terrell caught up on what we were doing with the review of the traffic rules and orders. We didn't get too far into it.
Did not get too far.
But obviously we can't talk about it or get you caught up to speed outside of a meeting. So maybe we can use that time to just talk about what we've done so far. A lot of it is just very basic language corrections, things that have been in the.
Just tightening things up.
Yes, stuff that's been in there for like, you know, thirty or forty years that's just.
No horses, no horses parked in front of the saloon on Sundays.
I wish we were, I wish we were kidding. There's literal language about like riding cattle through the center of the city.
Yeah, we don't, don't drive, don't drive the cattle through the center of the city. I'm not here on the twenty-second, so.
Are you here that week at all?
No, so I am here on the twenty ninth.
Vacation week.
School vacation.
Yeah, we can do the twenty ninth. We can have another meeting until the seventh after that.
Okay.
Correct? Or another council meeting.
We don't have another council meeting until the seventh, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, because we're skipping the last Wednesday because there's five Wednesdays.
So we want to do the twenty ninth?
Let's do twenty nine.
Six o'clock?
Let's do six o'clock. That was helpful for me. I got here right in the nick of time. And Counsel Riley, do you have a marked up version of what we were working on from traffic rules and order or does Owen have that?
I do have that.
Oh, sweet.
Yep, yep, yeah, we don't have to, no reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, not like the sashes, yeah. That's perfect. All right, great. So.
And we'll have Marion at the Taft.
Yeah, I don't know how that.
I don't need to, I remember talking about that. You have anything else?
I don't think so.
So moved.
All right, second.
Adjourn. Oh, favor. Aye.
Aye.